Two thousand twenty-four, six oh one P M. Uh, calling the meeting door, planning commission, Pro City Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. Uh, I'll lead it, followed by a roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks. Let's start with Commissioner Hill.
Jonathan Hill, no conflicts.
Melissa Kendall, no conflicts.
Robert Knudsen, no conflicts.
Jeff Whitlock, no conflicts.
Lisa Jensen, no conflicts.
Andrew South, no conflicts.
And Daniel Gonzalez, no conflicts. Although this is a public hearing, only the presenters. Yeah, only the presenters and those invited to the commission may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on. When speaking, please be sure to uh, to speak in the microphone so the record is clear. You state your name and city of residents for the record. Please limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you have a side conversation, please step out of the chambers. Uh, please do not interrupt or ask to speak over others. Intimidating or threatening speech or behavior will not be tolerated at any time. Please refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or being otherwise disruptive during the hearing. We'll start with uh, item number. We'll start with item number one. I'll read them both in at the same time since they're related with the same property. Uh, item number one, David Pitcher requests concept plan approval for a new thirty-eight unit residential subdivision and proposed R one six. Uh, one family residential zone located approximately at ten ninety-eight North Geneva Road, Lakeview North neighborhood. And item number two, David Pitcher requests a zone map amendment from the A one five agricultural zone to the R one six one family residential zone in order to create a thirty-eight to create thirty-eight new residential lots located approximately at ten ninety-eight North Geneva Road, Lakeview North neighborhood. Uh, Nancy Robson will be presenting from staff. Thanks.
Hello, Nancy Robison. Um, so the applicant is um, requesting approval of a concept plan and a rezone to create a thirty lot subdivision adjacent to Geneva Road at approximately ten ninety-eight north. We don't have any architectural plans that uh would go with this since these are just single family homes. The neighborhood would have an access point on Geneva Road. Additionally, they would connect to the neighborhood on the north at twenty-four thirty west and Reese Drive. Uh, the property to the north is zoned R two P D with twin homes and a performance development overlay. Uh, there was a neighborhood meeting held and the residents, some residents were concerned about access onto Geneva Road and increased traffic. They asked about traffic signals and what kind of sewer and storm drain improvements would be made? And also what the future of the canal uh to the west of the property would be. The current zone for the property is um, whoops. I think there's a, I think this sticks and so it goes too fast. Okay, so that's where it would be. That's the general um, plan map, which is residential. Uh, so the proposed zone for the property is R one six. Um, these lots met those standards. We just advance it one. There you go. Uh, the general plan suggests the residential density for the west side of Provo be held at three units per acre and this area contains twelve point one seven acres, so that equates to three point one two units per gross acre. Um, while there isn't sufficient infrastructure to proceed with the zone change as is, we would want a guarantee from the developer that the infrastructure would be installed. Um, with that, the staff believes that the applicant would be providing a well thought out plant to encourage residential properties in this area of Provo. We just advanced one more. These are just uh, photos of the property. That one's looking towards I fifteen and the other one's looking towards Geneva Road. So staff would uh recommend approval of the concept plan. And if the developer can commit to installing the needed infrastructure, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the zone map amendment to the city council. And do you have any questions for me?
Could you point out to us where the open irrigation ditch goes through?
Let's see. So I'm not sure if it's open now. It seems to me like um, this is the the irrigation right along here.
So it's alongside of the railroad track?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh. Sorry.
Uh, can you elaborate a little bit more on what the uh, the community meeting, what the nature of the irrigation or not, the drainage infrastructure complaints were by the residents?
Someone had just asked um about um, it seems to me like there was someone that asked whether or not it would be um, covered.
And when you say when it would be covered, are you talking about the the irrigation ditch alongside the railroad or some other ditches?
They said, um, someone asked about talking to the canal district about the open canal and piping the canal in that area. So that's what somebody was asking about. And I guess they were referred to to speaking with somebody that does specifically for the canal, work specifically with the canal.
I, to clarify, this property, the the canal isn't, does not cross these property lines?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Um. I think I might have missed when you showed it with the pointer, but that dirt stripe to the east of the subdivision, is that the train tracks?
No. So here is the bigger zone map. So this is just the path next to the canal. The train tracks are all the way over here.
Okay.
And I did a little calculation up at the north end. Um, it's four hundred and fifty feet from this north end over to these tracks. And down at the south, it's approximately two hundred and seventy feet just over to I fifteen.
So those are not the front runner tracks? Cause there's two sets of tracks there, the freight train and the front runner tracks.
Um, I don't know if I'm, I was my understanding that that was
Yeah, they're they're
in the same place where they are.
So the ones closest are front runner.
Yeah.
And the further ones are the
Okay.
the railway.
My mistake.
I just was trying to assess how nice that would be to have train tracks ten feet away from your fence or something. So um, the other questions I have are, is there any agricultural use currently on the property?
Not that I'm aware of.
And um, in regards to the questions about the, I think there were some in the neighborhood meeting about water runoff or or the high water table. Is that going to be a problem for development in this area?
So I know that they um, there was several conversations with engineering to make sure that they had all of that very correct and accurate to tie into that infrastructure. Um, I think David Day's around that he could answer that.
Could you explain to me, I'm a little concerned about the density being over the allotted general plan density for this, the west side? I know at one point there was discussion about three units per acre gross or three units per acre net. So does this actually fall within the acceptable threshold? Or is three point one two in fact over the threshold numerically?
Uh, as for gross, it it would be numerically. I'm sorry, I don't know about the net.
I'm just, I just know that back when that wa- was approved, there was a lot of discussion about net versus gross, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around whether this meets or doesn't meet the criteria that was laid out. Do you know what I'm saying, Mr. Pepperoni?
This is Director Pepperoni.
It was three net or four gross. The the language that's three net or four gross is what's been talked about.
So three point one two gross falls within those.
But when we updated the general plan, we put into the general plan the three point, the three point zero gross.
Okay.
Um, yes, this would technically be just over that. Um, because of our desperate need for housing lots in the city, we think we'd rather have an extra lot than knock this down to go below the three point zero. Considering a general plan that advisory document and not an ordinance, it's fine to proceed in this direction, but the city council would have to make that determination.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioners? Right here. Go ahead.
So Sandy, if you can go back to the previous one it was on. That one, yes, this one. So I see you have a temporary fire truck turnaround. There's kind of this weird border on the left. What roads would actually be constructed at the beginning of this, or is some of this held for a later phase of the development?
It's my understanding that some of it would be held for a later phase so that the up at the sorry, cul-de-sac, that would be um, built at the first point. And then when the owners of this property, sorry, the owners of this property, when they decided to further develop, then that road would come through.
So the the road on the bottom would be able to be fully built and the one on the back would also?
The one in the back would be fully built at the uh, start of the project is my understanding.
Okay. And then also the neighborhood had raised the concern about traffic light, traffics on Geneva. Do you know, can you address those issues at all? Do we know there's any plans or what the procedure for that is?
Uh, since it's a U dot road, all I know is that they were given permission for that one exit there. Um, there wasn't any talk that I heard about an actual traffic signal.
Traffic light.
Can, uh, can you help me out um, identifying which the the landlocked law is?
So um, we go back a couple slides. So there, this lot right here. If I'm looking at it correctly, let me pull up my apps. It's the lot that is right here going over to there. So it does not have access right now to Geneva Road. The one above it does have access and obviously the further one north does have access.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, I actually just thought of one more new one. If you can go back to that same one. In the back northeast corner here, there's kind of a diagonal lot line going through there. Is that going to be just an odd shaped lot where you kind of have a triangle lot tucked behind a trapezoid lot? Or is there a way to smooth that out, make them more rectangular?
Oh, on on that particular one?
On twenty-one, yeah.
Right. Um, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how far the property uh, what the property line extends for that home to the north. Um, that's just the legal property line of what exists right now for the owners of that north property.
Seems like you could almost fit another house in there if we could just work out a deal or something, but.
It looks like this will achieve some mixed use. Cause you're, or you know, like mixed housing types because lot twenty-one and twenty-eight are quite large in comparison, thirty-eight also. So it gives you kind of a a mix of sizes in that neighborhood.
Are I apologize if I wasn't listening completely, but the lot six forty-four, is that, is that expected to be further subdivided?
I don't, I don't think at this point it would be subdivided now. But possibly in the future, if the road goes that way, it could.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, uh, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
I actually have question, a question.
Yeah.
Um, a little tangential, but I'm, I am curious, like uh, so this, this development, obviously small, so we make sense, but there's not really any like park or open space amenities. Are there, does, does general plan lay out kind of potential acquisition the city could make for parks in this area? Is there's going to be a lot of new housing going in?
I'm not aware of any, but I don't know if I'm the right person to answer that question.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Uh. Yeah, we'll go ahead and have the applicant come forward if they're here. Uh, David Pritchard? Pitcher.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Uh, you'll have fifteen minutes.
Oh, I get fifteen minutes. Okay. I was, I'd prefer just to answer all the questions. Um, try to go back to some, um, the ditch that the, the property owner that the um, he knows a lot more about the ditch location than I do. Um, if it's okay with him to answer your question on exactly where the ditch is, if I can invite him up, if that's appropriate.
Are you, are you alright sharing some of your time with him? Let's come up and we'll have, we'll keep the clock running and
Yeah, I'm just trying to answer your question accurately.
Go ahead.
Okay, um.
Just come speak into directly into the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. And state your name.
Uh, Dave Bukers and I'm anyway, I I own the north part of that property and I don't, how how can I point to?
There's a
Oh, okay. So just point to it up there.
Yep. Can you see the red dot?
Uh, right there. Okay, so the, the ditch currently enters the property right, well, along Reese Drive, right about there. And it goes across the north part there for a ways. And I can't see, on, on the pictures that you, that were shown, they were taken from right about here. And the one that was looking towards Geneva Road, you could see kind of the, the part of the concrete ditch that goes, so after this runs over a bit, it goes downs to the south. And I, current property lines, I can't see. Anyway, it goes, goes to the south and then it heads west more ways. And then it heads back north on a, yeah, right, right up through there. And then it goes back into pipe to continue on up towards Geneva Road. So it kind of zigzags all over the place. Um, but anyway, that's, that's the current location of the, the open irrigation ditch. So is that?
And just to clarify, do you represent the, the irrigation company?
No, I'm, I'm the, the landowner.
Okay.
Does, does the irrigation pipe leave your property? Uh, as it goes to the west, does it leave your property? No, it's, it stays on our property until it crosses under Geneva Road. So is that?
Is it just a summer like use for irrigating crops?
Yes.
About, uh, or is there water in it year round?
There is water there year round because there is a spring. Um, well, I anyway, uh, uh, along the where to go? So, yeah, it, well, it, it goes, it goes through the, the property on this side. It, it comes out of the canal just north of the, wh- where the cr- canal process, you know, the S curve. And then it, it heads generally west and south until it gets to our property. Um, most of that is covered, but there, there is a spring alongside the freeway. It's north of the map here that, that empties into the ditch. Plus, in addition to the spring, the, the ditch that drains along the railroad empties into that irrigation ditch. And so, yeah, there's, there's water. And anytime there's a significant rainstorm, there's water in the ditch. And there's some water in the ditch year round from the spring. So. Okay. Anything further? Is that it? Yeah, I think we're good. So, yeah, but the point is either way is we'll have to pipe what that's, it's essentially a hybrid storm drain slash irrigation ditch. I'm sure it was designed to be an irrigation ditch originally because of the high water tables and the highway and such that causes water to flow there year round, but we're anticipating having to straighten that out and pipe it. And of course, where it comes into our property and where it goes out of the property will essentially have to be the same. Um, but yeah, nobody usually complains about piping and straightening out a ditch because it's generally better for everybody. As far as the lot count, if you, excuse me, um, the goddess at that uh, three point one lot four, if you'll notice, that was originally intended to be, that lot wouldn't meet a minimum uh, depth and width standards, you can tell by that. And the reason that was there is because we anticipated having to have a retention pond. And um, it had more recently come to light as we're working, getting closer to um, doing construction drawings that the city actually would rather not have a retention pond there. Um, cause you guys have a bigger facility or, or our proximity to the lake. And so losing that lot um, would potentially take us below the three point one. However, we would, we're hoping because of the uh, large expense, because we have to run sixteen hundred foot of sewer and storm drain from um, down Geneva Road. And that's, it's, it's not just sufficient for our property. It's also sufficient for all the properties to the south and some to the west there that would be able to confidential, potentially connect into that. And so that's a really large expense, as you can imagine. And so we're trying to get a little higher density to offset those costs. We also felt that the higher density was reasonable because we had the uh, twin homes or the R two density directly north of us. And also the proximity to the tracks in Geneva Road. Um, Nancy and staff has been really fantastic working with us. We've gone back and forth. Um, working out the access road there to the south between thirty-seven and thirty-six there for future development. And um, all of, you know, we, we've gone back and forth a lot on the conception plan, more than we anticipated. As far as twenty-one and twenty-eight, they are larger lots, but um, there's a I think they're essentially, we couldn't fit one more lot because one more lot makes them not the, not within minimum standards. Um, essentially, you see what I mean? The one, it's just the size and shape of the property. And this is actually multiple parcels with two property owners. Um, and so, and the way we've come about this design is it's hard to tell, but essentially you can see the property lines between the two different property owners. They run between uh, the backs. You can see the trees, yeah, right along there. That's essentially the property line. And so we're dealing with two different sellers and two different property owners. Uh, the beautickers here, the gentleman that just spoke owns the property to the north. He also owns the house there in the north. Yeah, right there and, and, and his barns and such. And so they were amicable to selling a portion of their property, essentially the eastern, which we are developing. And as we get uh, construction drawings and such, um, you know, one of these lot lines might move a little bit here or there. Um, but beautickers wanted to retain the portion of their a portion of their property, which is essentially six forty-four. So is what we're doing is we're rezoning their property for them as part of this, but they will retain ownership of all of six forty-four. And it won't technically be a new phase or a second phase. It's just their property that they're intend to keep for their farm. Um, and it was just part of the deal we worked out. We felt like that was reasonable. As far as the roads, we will construct everything that's in front of uh, all the lots that are numbered except the six forty-four. You can tell the six forty-four essentially includes their house and their barns and the, the, the pasture where the number six forty-four is. Um, w- w- Yeah, I don't, I don't recall any of your other questions that you had on that. Um, we did go back and forth. You'll notice the road coming in over on, I think that's Reese, yeah, this one where it comes in, it's only fifty, but you, you guys have changed the road. The city has changed the road standards. And so we've had to go back and, you know, you'll see that it, it necks down a little because of that road. You've guys reduced it by two feet and the one over on to the top left um, by their barns, that one's actually only forty-four feet. um, by their barns, that one's actually only forty four feet wide. And so you'll see that that grows. But essentially this concept plan, because we've gone back and forth so much, meets all the minimum standards uh, for road widths and design and, and everything. Um, of course, there'll be a lot more work to do in the construction drawings. That's when the real work starts, in my opinion. Um, with staff and, and we'll try to, of course, we'll have to address everything, but I prefer to field questions if I've only got five minutes left.
Yeah, uh, just to clarify, can you state your name and who you represent or what?
I'm David Pitcher and I didn't intend for the subdivision to be called Pitcher Provost Subdivision. So hopefully we can still change the name. Need a better name than that. And, uh, I, I represent the developer.
Okay.
I apologize.
Um, one of my concerns is that the general plan states an objective of not moving agricultural to residential, like not just tossing our agricultural use out the window. And so I asked earlier if any of the land was used for agricultural use and the answer was no, but it sounds like it is actually used for agriculture.
Well, it's.
Just lot six forty four is the only area that's currently being used for anything agricultural like.
Can't say that they don't have, they don't let their goats and such go out there, but as far as I know, there's nothing being, there hasn't been anything planted on it. I, I mean, the property owner would know better than I do. But there's not hay or corn or anything like that. It's, and most everything that you can, that has lots has got a higher water table and I wouldn't call it wetlands, but it's, it's a little bit moist. And I think that was another question that, uh, somebody had was about the water table. There's two things that I'll address that. When you put in the piping, because you got sewer, storm drain, water and all that, that actually a lot of times will lower the water table because it creates channel for those wa- that water. Although that's absolutely not what we're counting on because you just can't count on that happening. But none of these homes will have basements. These will all be a slab on grade and they'll have to have their minimum slope away. And people don't really realize it, but, um, even these homes of these buildings across the street, they're probably sixteen inches above the road. And you just don't realize it because the slope is so gradual. And so, and even at that, you've technically per code, you have to have a foot of a foot between your dirt and your, and your bottom joist, right? And so there's not going to be a water issue in any of these homes because it's just not, you know, they're just not going to be that deep. They're going to be probably two, at least two feet above the existing grade.
You mentioned that you were going to be building the roads as well as the sewer drain and water piping. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, it'll be a hundred percent complete, all, all the roads. I, I think it was your question of what roads are we building and not building. Um. The purpose of this plan as it goes above lot, so you can see we don't own that middle section there. Right? So we couldn't, this is a master plan for what could happen in the future. So we basically kind of went a step further and said, hey, this is where these roads will be able to connect. Um, even though they don't really have anything to do with our property, but yeah, anything that is touches our lots, you know, from, from seventeen and sixteen, twenty, twenty one, twenty eight, twenty nine, yeah, all the.
So you do, you're improved. I, I'm mostly just asking you, you're, you're paying for construction and building it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then basically then the maintenance burden then moves to the city after X period of time. How, how does that agreement work?
Well, um, standard is, um, the developer, if they, um, if they choose to record, I'm not sure if provos. Every city I've ever dealt with in different states and in Utah are all this way. Prova may have a nuance, but if the developer chooses to the re- record the subdivision and turn it into lots before putting in the improvements, they have to put up a, a performance guarantee, um, usually cash or, or a letter of credit or something at the bank. Um, different cities have different requirements. And, and, and how they'll allow that to be drawn down. Um, and of course there's inspections done by the city, um, throughout the whole process um, that are part of our costs and impact fees and such. And then, um, you get a final inspection on the subdivision. And, you know, any broken concrete or anything like that, that had happened during construction. Generally you have to replace. And so it's a hundred percent good before you get your final. And then, um, a one year, um, warranty period starts. And so any additional concrete that gets broken happens, you'd be surprised. You get a lot of broken concrete from cement, if people start building, you know, that happens. So, and you have to put up ten percent of the overall cost to ensure the warranty of the work. And then in a year, you get another, call it final release of your warranty. And then, yeah, and then at that point, all maintenance and everything gets turned over to the city because it's not, it's not a P U D.
Okay, it's not a P U D, yeah.
No, it's not.
Any other questions? Yeah, yeah, uh. Your, your time for presenting is over. However, we still, uh, if we have questions, we.
Oh, I got you. Okay. So I ended a couple of minutes early, but I'm answering questions. So we're good.
Right.
For the record. Okay.
So if anyone, yeah, if anyone has questions and feels like, oh, the clocks run out, um, that's not the case. You can still ask questions. Have agreements already been made with the irrigation company as far as relocating that or tapping in?
Um.
Is that something you anticipate in the future?
It, we will work with them, but we're not tapping in. We're just piping. Um. It's always better to get, you know, flies with honey than vinegar. So we'll definitely do all we can to work with them. Um, I don't want to say something wrong here, but, um, the Utah statute essentially says that we have a right to move uh, an irrigation line or anything like that. Um. Uh, uh, that's on your property, um, as, and the other the company, irrigation company in this case, will have a right to review the plans and make any comments or concerns. But again, in this instance, I just don't anticipate a problem straightening out a ditch. You know, that's, is what we'll essentially do is run it. It'll just be an easement behind the lots or in the road, whatever. Um, the city or, or the irrigation company prefers.
Because this is just a conceptual plan with the zone change, engineering hasn't resolved all of those kinds of issues. Details like that will be worked out with the subdivision plant. But as we've discussed before, water rights in this state are sacred. You can't cut off somebody's water rights to downstream user. So between engineering and the property owner will work out and working with the canal company will work out, making sure that there's pro- those water rights are respected. But we'll be never resolve that at this point of, of development review. We're still at a very high level.
Yeah, thank you.
But, but yeah, I want you to feel comfortable. We've, I've got almost every project I have has some sort of canal or ditch or something going through it. That's just a common thing. So, um. Yeah, it's just something that's worked out in, in the construction drawings, but I appreciate his comment.
Uh, did you, and did you attend the, the neighborhood meeting?
I did.
Okay. Does anyone feel like he addressed some of the, the concerns that came up in the neighborhood meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Pitcher? Thank you for your time.
Not too hard. Thanks.
We'll now open the hearing to public comments. I see there's multiple people from the public here. Uh. I invite you to please come forward, come line up on the first row. Uh. We'll open the hearing to public comments. When your time is up, uh, you'll hear a ding and the microphone will be muted. Uh, each person may make one comment. If we have questions, we, we invite you to come back to the microphone at that time. So this time is for comments only. If you have questions about an item, please, uh, speak with, uh, our staff member, Ms. Robinson or, or Director Pepperoni. Uh, they're here to field questions as well. Uh. Let, let's start if there's any neighborhood district chairs. Are there any neighborhood district chairs here? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone come forward. Uh, we'll go ahead with our first public comment. Please state your name and where you live.
Okay, my name is Linda Voight and I live north of the property, above like seventeen, I think. Um, my comment is we had twenty five neighborhood homes that flooded last winter that were, that were on street away and Upper East Road. And, and they worked for the city, but there was a question of why that happened. Could have been the canals that had been, you know, something done with that. But twenty five people lost their basements, lost money. Didn't have flood insurance because there was no water around there that they thought they had to worry about. So that is my worry, that there's a lot of water in this property and, you know, that it definitely is taken care of. We, we love this plan much more than we love the hu- the plans from before that have been presented. So it's not so much the plan. It's the amount of water that needs to be taken care of. Also, our property is probably at the back of our property, it, it goes down, but it's probably, I don't know. It kind of maybe meets where the property is. So when this is built up two feet, that runoff is probably going to come in my backyard. So that will need to be thought of also. Just the runoff. And this is another, that is the rail, railroad tracks that go on the back of the line. She had said they were over, but that is railroad tracks. That's the front runner track.
So there's, you're, you're saying there's tracks right adjacent to the.
Behind twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. That goes right behind the property.
Not just a dirt.
Not just a dirt road. That's front rudder tracks.
Any other, you got like thirty seconds left. Do you want to say anything else?
All I want to say, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, please come forward, state your name and if you have any comments to make. Okay, I, I'm not seeing anyone get up, but I, I do see people. We'll, we'll go ahead and close. Uh. We'll go ahead and close the public comment in that case. Uh, we'll discuss.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead. If you want to recall anyone out.
Ms. Voight, you said twenty five homes on Reese.
Uh, come, if you can come up again, I'm sorry.
Do, I just wanted to clarify, do those homes have basements, like underground levels? Because he said that these homes will not have basements. So I was trying to see if that was a similar situation.
They do have basements. I think most of them.
Okay.
But.
Thank you.
I, I have, if you don't mind me asking again, you could come back. I appreciate your, let's come back and forth. What, what was, uh, the situation like this year? I, last year was like a just a complete record breaking wet snow year. I'm, I'm.
I didn't hear of anybody having problems, but a lot of people had to do a lot of work, um, with drainage, with, you know, redoing things so that it wouldn't happen again.
Okay.
But I haven't heard of anybody having problems yet this year.
Okay.
We still haven't, that was in February, I think, last year that it happened. So.
Alright, thank you. Any other, do we want to recall anyone else? Any staff members or, or the applicant? Okay, and, okay, well, that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion and discuss amongst ourselves. Um. Anyone has any opening or like remarks they want to make or comments? Please go ahead. Lisa?
I can summarize some of my thoughts. Um, initially I was concerned that there's a few of the general plan goals that I don't feel like we're really meeting. I feel like we're saying, yeah, we didn't want to get rid of agricultural land unless it was really worthwhile. And yeah, we don't want to go above three acres or three units per acre, but we're doing it here and I can appreciate the staff logic in that. That the location is such that, um, it's not as desirable for something more. But also can we always say that? Like, can we always say, oh yeah, but we want more affordable housing. We want more. And then we'll just keep circumventing those general plan goals. So like you said, it's not set in stone. We have flexibility here, but that was just, I just want to raise that as something I'm thinking about that we are getting rid of agricultural property and we are, um, slightly going above our, our aim for density. I want to make sure we don't mess that up. Um. I like that there's a little bit of variety in the lot sizes. I love the roads interconnecting. I think that's very well thought out and um. I'm not super worried about the flooding because these don't have basements in them. I think that works with the water table issues, though I know that the lots themselves could get really soggy and that could be very undesirable. The one thing I do worry about is if in fact they're being raised up a little bit and they will slope downwards towards the homes to the north. Um, I live in a situation like that where the house was above me. We're supposed to put, um, drainage behind them. And then as soon as the house got sold and somebody else moved in, they're like, why is this here? And they filled it in. So that's a really hard thing to, um, maintain in sort of an uninformed transfer of ownership. People, that doesn't last very long in my opinion. So I worry a little bit about that. Those are some of my thoughts.
Yeah, I'd like to just comment a little bit on the west side plan because I was involved in that process. And I never remember the, the goal of maintaining agricultural uses saying that when a property owner wanted to develop a land, we should say no in that case. The idea was more of for those who would like to maintain agriculture, we will not force them to change. We will not do that. And so, um, for me, that's not too much of a concern, especially in this particular area where it's pretty much surrounded by homes already along this area. Um. The, the drainage issue can be an issue. I know we have ordinances to say you have to take care of your own water kind of thing, that it can't go onto neighboring properties. Um, like you said, it often happens anyway. Um, and then you have to kind of fight with your neighbor to get them to fix it kind of thing. And that's never fun. Um. That said, I don't know, I, I don't know if we could ever build next to somebody else if we ever, if we actually just said, well, we're never going to do that, especially because out there, they're changing the flood plains. They're changing all these things and they're requiring higher lifts everywhere out on the west side. So I think that's always an issue. Um. It's an interesting project. Um, I think we do need more housing in this city. This is an area that is developing. I expect that traffic studies will be done in the future on Geneva. If a light is warranted, it will be put in. So I'm not concerned about that. Um, it is next to the train tracks as well, although there's already precedence. There's a whole row of homes. Um, some, some of my son's friends live on Reese Road and they've got trains right behind their house and they know it when they move in, so they work with it. Um. So, yeah, I think those are some of my thoughts. Basically, some things are not ideal here. But I don't know if they are bad enough to say, we're not going to allow this to become residential ever because of it, kind of thing. Awkward pause.
Okay, I have a question. So does the city feel confident that, um, the way they're going to handle the, um, the water is adequate so that raising these properties up doesn't cause drainage issues for the homes to the north?
Yeah, I, I don't know if Dave, David or Bill wants to come up, whichever you guys can fight over. Um. No, uh, David Day, our public works. I, I understand like that this, this, we're, we're approving a concept. And a lot of these engineering issues, uh, will be addressed at uh, at subdivision plat approval. Um, but if you could just tell us some of the mitigation uh, things that go on and, and maybe address, uh, concerns about flooding, uh, at the north lots.
Okay, uh, again, David Day with Provost City Public Works. Um. So in, in a situation uh, like this development, which has not developed for a lot of years because of good reasons and most of them are very expensive solutions. There's not any infrastructure to ha- be able to handle the development in this area. And so, um, the developers notified of that and they would have to be willing to do a lot of offsite improvements and they, they've talked about that before. Um, and so we'll just have to have assurance that that's going to be done and that's normally done at the city council level. We'll just have to have assurance that that's going to be done and that's normally done at the city council level. Um, so they'll have to be prepared for that at city council. Things that they're going to have to do is like put storm drain uh sewer and water. Well, storm drain and sewer probably clear down to. Uh, eight twenty north, so they've got a long way to go. But everybody in between them and eight twenty north will benefit. Uh, we have. Uh, pioneering agreements that make it so that anyone who uses that system within ten years will have to pay them. A portion of their costs back to them. So that's already in place. I am not aware of the flooding that happened. And I normally know about stuff like that, so I'm not sure what happened there. So I I can't really address that. The the elevation of all those homes is up out of the flood plain, so. If if we have a geotech report. It says the groundwater is a certain elevation. We make them raise the house four foot above that elevation. And and that um makes sure that there's no water. That comes up through into the home, so. I I'm not aware of a high groundwater issue in this area. In the stuff north of here. And so um if there was flooding, I'm not sure where that came from. It was a really wet year. Um, and we had things happening that don't normally happen, so. Is that all of your questions?
I have one just quick question uh on the basement. Uh, the the notion that they wouldn't be built with basements, it. Is there a mechanism for that? It seems like these would be developed in paper lots that gets sold off. People permit them with or without a basement like.
Yeah, so what what we um call out normally is a. Lowest habitable floor elevation. And and that could be a basement or just a main floor living area. So. As part of that analysis, we'll define that elevation. And that no finished floor can go below that. And and that's taking into account all of the groundwater. And and other things that could happen. Say this was next to Provo River, then. Then we take into account not only groundwater, but. Potential flooding out of the river and the influence that that may have. So those end up being even higher out of the grounds.
And that lowest habitable elevation, is that determined at the subdivision level or at the lot by lot level?
Um, at the subdivision level. Yeah, so. You you may not necessarily see that because that will be at a final plant plan state. And I'm not sure whether this has to come back for approval or not. It may. Um, but. We'll work all that out uh once the zoning is decided on.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any other questions for you. Thank you, Mr. Day. Uh, further discussion. Um, I don't know. I'm not too concerned about the size of the lots. Uh, and and. Regards to like like. Like compared to. Bigger lots or and and how that works with open space. Amenities uh. If if they are smaller. Which at six thousand square feet. I've seen smaller, like there are, you know, you see four thousand square foot lots or three thousand. I've I've seen. Single family home lots as as small as that. But I think it also serves a. You know, maybe a niche in the marketplace that would help. Address some of the. The housing issues we're having. Do some thoughts.
Have a question. For Mr. Hill. When um you addressed my concerns about changing agriculture to residential, thank you for that. What is your perspective on? Um, the three units per gross acre?
Ah, yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
Do you feel like we're, we've got wiggle room there or do you feel like this is pushing the limits?
I'm torn on it is where I'm at because. When we set those up, one thing we talked about was that limit and that every developer would try to push that limit and that we needed to stick. To a limit or everybody could start saying, hey, well, you did it for them, right? Um, on the other hand, technically with the sewer capacity, et cetera, that that number was based on, there is some wiggle room. Um, and even more now because that did not account for the sports park and. Um, an area of about forty acres, I think, that was changed from residential to light industry, things like that. And so. There is wiggle room, but the question becomes, do we want to start down that path? And I I don't know. Um, with. I guess I'm a little more flexible, I guess, when you have kind of odd shaped lots like this. Um, because sometimes it can be hard to to reach a limit, right? I think in this case, for example, they're either going to be way below or slightly above. And they with the weird angles and stuff, they just don't have a lot that they can do. With that. But yes, I'm torn completely on it.
I certainly understand hesitation to go over to the three point zero. But in answer to the question you asked, we've been meeting for many months with two developers who are doing large projects on the west side. And they've been told in the areas that are designated as three units of the acre to stay stay at that. But because they're much larger parcels and they're much have a much more regular shape, it's a lot easier for them to do that and obey that. This is not only weirdly shaped, but with that island in the middle makes it even harder. So again, I'm not worried about this setting some kind of precedent that locks us into anything. Um, we've been sticking to that three with other developers on the west side. And I I I don't. Think that's going to really hurt us.
I think my thoughts on it were that um, I I think Pep. Director Pepperoni noted earlier that this. It's meant to be somewhat flexible. It's not. Codified in the ordinance like. Three units per acre or or else. But it is a guidance and it's advisory.
I guess I just worry that. Once you say yes to the three point one, then everyone will want to go with three point one. And then everyone will want to go with three point two because it's really close and it's not that much different and. And maybe there is that much wiggle room with with the extra land that's that's in the pot now, but. I I guess I just don't understand property values enough. I look at this and go, well, can't we just shift the lines of. Thirty three, thirty two, thirty one over a little bit and then combine twenty nine and thirty and we've got one less lot and we've met the limit. But that also eliminates some of the goal for affordable housing. So if you make those lots bigger.
Like I know. I know like in in past. Projects we've seen that come before the commission. Uh, if someone was proposing. Uh, townhomes or duplexes or. Any other kind of multifamily higher density, there would. There would be a kerfuffle. And so like with this being. Single family homes, it's it's something that is a. It's a complaint that I hear regularly on Provo. There's not enough single family homes. And uh. This is a project that goes straight for that.
Yeah, I think um. I like it. It's a very odd shaped piece of property. And we're going to create thirty four ish uh lots that are small and probably. More economically accessible for people and they can kind of. I didn't actually ask whether he's going to be billed to suit or is he going to give a developer. No, it doesn't really matter, but um, yeah, I think it's a great project. I think it's a great use of the land. I think it matches. The adjacent property relatively well with regards to density. There's homes all around. And uh I like the lots, actually the small lot sizes from um. To make use of a very odd shaped piece of land and create a market. Probably a market price that's going to be more accessible to early young families.
Could I make motion that we um? Vote on how concerned we are about that lot size and then we could just pass that along to the municipal council since they have the final say on this. Would that be a useful way to get beyond this?
I think so. You you address the the concern of the issue and then we put a vote breakdown that we could forward.
So let me see if I can articulate what the root of it is. How um? How many of us are? Concerned. To. Set a precedent at going over the three unit per acre. Goal. Is that, does Mr. Hill, does that seem to catch capture what the concern is for you as well?
For me, yes, I think it's important to say that I'm more concerned about the precedent than this particular use.
Exactly.
Because of its odd shape, et cetera.
Because I know the next person will say, but they got to do it. And maybe they won't, but that's what I fear, so. Okay, so I don't know if that's a mo- I guess my motion is that we vote on it and then. If we need to approve that motion or second that motion and then you can call for the vote with that question.
Yeah, let's just go with that right now. If you have reservations.
Can we just get clarification on what it is? Like, are we concerned about setting a precedent with this? Or are we concerned about this specific project going over that?
How many of us are a hundred percent okay with going over three units per acre?
In this case.
On just this property?
Project or projects in general?
Any any project because of that goal that we've been trying to work within, how many of us are concerned about that? And we want to pass that concern along to the municipal council to consider when they make their decision.
So if that's the choice, that's different to me because this property is different. I mean, if you took off all the odd angles where it's not usable space, you're down to. Then the square footage decreases, right?
So you're saying it's not even an issue?
I don't think it's an issue.
For me, not in this particular case because I can see why, but I am worried about the message it sends. More generally would be all.
Andy, Andrew.
Yeah, I feel the same way. Like, I don't have a problem with it here, but and Director Pepperoni has talked about how. We as a city are specifically looking at that. And so, you know, going to great lengths to discuss and be clear that. This is a case by case issue and this one seems to be. You know, benefiting the public good by doing that, then that's not a problem.
So you're not particularly worried about setting a precedent?
No.
So maybe we don't even need to vote because it sounds like.
I think. You put the motion. If someone wants to second that motion, I like, let's go ahead and I I'm very happy to. Do.
I mean, it might be, maybe it's. Just have that written down that. Is a big enough concern to talk about.
And I think us even just taking the vote. Sends a message already, right?
Yeah, I'm let's, I'll second the motion.
Well, can we get clarification on what the motion is just so that it's clear what we're.
Mr. Hill, will you, will, my motion is that we are voting. That's all. So the.
Okay, I'll I'll put a motion, I'll put a motion for. I I move that we take a a poll, a account of. Uh, whether we have reservations. About going over three units per acre. In general. Not this property, but all all future properties. Um, if you have reservations about that. Uh, show by a raise of. We'll go vote, we'll go by ayes and nays.
Okay, I'm although I.
I vote I.
So wait, wait, I means you have reservations.
Reservations in general, not about this property. That's what you said the motion was. So I do not have reservations about this property. But I do have reservations in general. I'd like for the city to stick to that and it and they've committed to that, so.
Okay.
That's an I.
That's three, Commissioner Newton said I. Nay?
Nay.
I.
Nay.
Okay, so that's. Four ayes. And three nays. Does that? Does that work? Any other? With further discussion on the items in the agenda?
Okay, could we potentially make a motion on the item?
Yeah, are we really? Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, I uh I make a motion. That uh on item number one, David Pritchard requests concept plan approval for a new thirty eight. Unit residential subdivision in the proposed R one six. Zone located approximately at uh ten ninety eight north Geneva Road, Lakeview North Neighborhood. Uh, and I'd like to make a motion that uh we approve the concept plan.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing uh, we'll go ahead and and vote. Uh, Commissioner Hill.
I.
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 I'm going to vote nay, not because I don't like the plan because I really do, but just to send. That message that. I that worries me. The density.
I.
Okay, it is uh. Six, one, I to to approve. And thank you for explaining your reason why and clarifying that um. Right, uh, item number two. Anyone want to put forward a a motion? Commissioner Newton.
I would, we send a. Positive uh recommendation to the municipal council for item number two. Uh, David Pitcher requests a zone map amendment from the A one point five agricultural zone. To the R one point six one family residential zone. In order to create thirty eight new residential lots located approximately at ten ninety eight north. Geneva Road, Lakeview North Neighborhood.
Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Maybe I should do this discussion before the second. Commissioner Hill seconded. Uh, let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Hill.
Hi.
I.
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 Hi.
I'm voting I because I don't have a problem with the zone change.
I.
Alright, it's seven zero uh. Recommending approval. Uh, with that. Yeah, with that, we'll end our meeting. Um, is there any motion for to adjourn? I call for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, I, everyone.
Hi.
Hi, okay, thanks. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, public and attendees, applicant for attending. And staff.